Just a couple of minutes waiting for something real quick. Meeting to order, please. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Ms. Dela?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Seven present.
Three, the minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the inauguration exercises of January 3, 2022, and the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Law School Committee of January 5, 2022, and to place them on file by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor? 3.1, approval of the minutes of the inauguration exercise on Monday? Four, permission to enter. Permission to enter January 19, 2022. Any questions? Need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Martin, second by Mr. Rossi. Roll call, please. Sure, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on the translation partners, American translation partners. How does this intersect with the previous contracts that we've had in place?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Mayor? If I could, Mr. Mayor? Ms. Turner, can you provide an update to the committee on that?
Sure. As you know, there's a nationwide shortage of staff, and even the translation companies are facing that. So we currently have a contract with Bay State, who has already admitted that they cannot meet our demand. And so with that, I've reached out to the solicitor to see if we can amend the contract down, being that they cannot meet the terms. And what we are doing is reaching out to a few different vendors that are on the state contract, and hoping that if we do smaller contract amounts with a few of them, that maybe they could meet our need.
Okay, so basically, we're gonna amend the original contract with Bay State down to what, like 200? Because that was what, two something?
Even less than that. We're trying to determine what they are able to meet, and then reduce it significantly, based upon whatever percentage they, you know, can or cannot meet.
Okay.
Ms. Turner, I believe you're giving the prior vendor, the current vendor is, uh, what?
I'm sorry, Language Bank.
Language Bank.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Dela, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Dela?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
This came to me. I myself would like to ask for a motion to suspend the rule, second by Ms. Martin. I have a special citation here for a retired teacher. She couldn't be here tonight, but I would like to read here in the chamber, if you don't mind, and we can make arrangement for her to come pick it up later. Citation, be it hereby known to all that the City of Lowell, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, hereby offers its sincere gratitude and congratulations to Alice McLaughlin, in recognition of her retirement of 30 years from the Dr. Gertrude Bailey School as the administrative clerk of Lowell Public Schools on December 23, 2021. The Bailey School was established in 1992. Alice was hired to be the school clerk by Dr. Gertrude Bailey herself, a trusted colleague and friend that encouraged her to become a paraprofessional instead of a parent volunteer at the former Lincoln School. For three impressive decades, Alice made her mark as the voice, face, and heart of the Bailey School. Her strong work ethic, compassion, problem-solving skills, and a quick wit made her dependable to all who might have needed help and support. She was loved and respected by those who were lucky enough to encounter her in those halls, whether it be students, staff, administration, and even her grand and great-grandchildren. Now therefore, I, Ms. Akri Chow, hereby wish Alice McLaughlin all the best in her well-deserved retirement. The entire City of Lowell extends its deepest appreciation of her many years of dedicated service to the city and the community, given this 19th day of January 2022. Signed by myself and the entire school committee members. Thank you. Five, memorials.
May I? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. As having worked at the Bailey School back in 1992 when it opened, and she was the secretary and that person that would greet you as you entered the school, and was always a wonderful experience, and she was probably the biggest Elvis Presley fan I've ever known in my entire life. But she was just a wonderful person, and I'm so glad to hear that she's retiring and she's gonna have a really good time. She's a terrific lady, truly. Thank you.
She will appreciate that. Mr. Dela?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was that your first citation?
It's my first citation here, thank you. No further comments. Five, memorials for Avantea Ducarcus, a retired daily school teacher. Six, motions. 6.1, by Ms. Karen Martin, requesting that the administration develop a transparent reporting system that will allow parents and students to report concerns with school meal offerings directly to our vendor, and provide a feedback tracking system so the school committee can monitor response to concerns. Second by Mr. Dakota. Any comment, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, obviously, this is a topic we've been discussing for a very long time. And I do think that we get a lot of competing information on the topic. What I think would be best for all concerned would be for us to have an open and transparent way to be able to communicate, so that we'd be getting both direct concerns. I know I had said this at our last meeting when we had the representatives of Aramark here, that, you know, it's very true, they can't be expected to fix things that they don't know about. So I think if we have, if the administration can help us pull together just a simple communication mechanism, as simple as, you know, I went on the website, and when I was looking at the food service, it certainly listed who you could contact, but a live link would make that much easier. You know, so I think that there are ways that we could make it easier for, whether it's students or, you know, particularly parents and family members, to be able to let the contractor know when there are concerns, and for there to be a way for the contractor to be able to communicate back what's been done to resolve those concerns. Because I think things, you know, they just build and build and build, and then we have this explosion of concern and angst. This way, we can put a system in place that allows us to be proactive, that there are problems, we all know about it, and then ultimately, we all know about the solutions. So that would be my motion in a nutshell, to request that the administration develop a system that would allow us to accomplish that.
Motion approved. Mr. Dela, you wanna make comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good motion, in a way. I will support it. However, my worries is that if we open this to the public, how can you filter all these hundreds of, uh, if there would be, everybody can go in and say whatever they want. I don't know whether it's gonna open a floodgate of comments. Anyway, I support that motion, anyway. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate that concern, Ms. Dela, and I appreciate the support. I mean, and this is only my own recommendation, but I mean, we survey, we communicate with our parents and our families in a lot of different ways. The idea of putting on the website a link that would bring you to a survey, that then you just quickly fill out, this is my name, this is the school, this is the concern, it's not a public document, it's something that's being communicated to the vendor, and then the vendor is responding to kind of, at a school-based level, if that makes sense. So I mean, again, I'd leave it to the administration to come up with a recommendation, but I think they should certainly take into account Mr. Dela's concerns. I share those.
Ms. Del Rossi?
I think that is very important because I just received a call from a constituent in Centerville, and she is like that her son is...
Would you please turn on your microphone? Thank you.
I just received a call from a constituent in Centerville. Her son is not, not, he has the last lunch at Lowell High School, and he's saying that basically they're out of everything by their last lunch, lunch four. And for a kid to go all day from 7:55, I think the last lunch is 1 o'clock-ish to 1:20-ish, and there's no selection for him. So I think in that case, it's important to have a way that parents can put in their own concerns, because no one wants to hear their kids are not eating. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I definitely support the motion. It's a strong motion. I think even when I was, you know, speaking to a lot of constituents early on, that was one of the biggest things that they brought to me, students and parents alike. What I would also like for the administration to add to this, and this is kind of beneficial, I think, to Aramark, is to have a system where they can upload pictures, because I think sometimes that's really helpful in order to see what the exact problem is, as opposed to just trying to describe it. And in this age, I think that would be a helpful tool for them as well. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ferrera?
Yeah, as a student, like, I entirely support this. A lot of the students, like, if we see something that's wrong with the food, we just throw it out, and nothing really gets done with it, and we just accept that, or some students just accept that it's the way it is, and it's just how we have to deal with it. But I think implementing a communication device would streamline the process for everybody, both Aramark, us, and students and parents as well. It just make, I feel like it would be easier for everyone if we went through with that.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly support this motion as well, and having been at the high school as long as I was, I won't tell you how long that was, but anyway, the last lunch has always been an issue at the high school. It is what it is, and I wish there was a quick solution to something like that, but maybe Aramark can come up with a solution on that. But let's find out what they can propose for that, as a solution. Thank you.
Motion approved. 6.2, Ms. Eileen Del Rossi requests superintendent provides the school committee with a detailed list of all expenditures related to school building maintenance and repairs for fiscal year 2022, second by Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Del Rossi? Do you have any comment?
Yes, I'm just, I would like to see what the school side has put into maintenance and overall repairs for the buildings for the fiscal year 2022. Just due to the fact that if we're putting money into our buildings, I mean, and we don't own them, then I just wanna see what our expenditures, our expenditures are on the school side.
Thank you. Any comment? Mr. Dela?
I think, I think that's, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a great idea, and would be nice to have the city have doing the same thing. I don't know how we can do that. Would that be something that, um, we can ask this, Mr. Mayor, that the city can do the same thing?
Sure. You wanna me bring it to the city side?
Right. I think it's a good motion. Thank you.
Wonderful. Motion approved. 6.3, Ms. Eileen Del Rossi requests superintendent provides the school committee with current cafeteria staffing levels at the STEM Academy, second by Mr. Dakota. Ms. Del Rossi, any comment?
Yes, I believe that the STEM Academy is preparing 950 lunches for all of the kids at the STEM Academy, yet they're also providing all of the satellite schools for their food. And if I have the eight satellite schools correct, that's an additional over 700? I mean, is the, I mean, I would like to ask a question through the mayor to the superintendent, I guess. Is it the Cardinal O'Connell, the LeBlanc, the Moody, the Washington Career Academy, Laura Lee, the Bridge, and the 80-day school, all the satellite schools?
Dr. Boyd?
Dr. Halsey.
I believe what I heard is accurate.
So in total, when I check their enrollment, that's, so the STEM Academy is doing 950 lunches for their own school, breakfast and lunch, and totaling those schools, that's an additional 769 lunches? So I mean, with COVID especially, I mean, what's their staffing like? And could that be a cause for their having not the greatest food, or some of the complaints? So it's a total of over 1,700 lunches that the STEM Academy alone is responsible for getting out to all kids. STEM Academy plus the eight satellite schools. So it could resolve some issues. I know there are issues where, you know, schools have their own kitchens as well, but if we can see what the consistent staffing levels are, it would be helpful to see what, maybe what we could do to help alleviate some of that load, because that's a mighty number, over 1,700 for one cafeteria staff to get out.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could be wrong, but I think the Robinsons has a kitchen facility, and perhaps they could share some of that load with the STEM Academy, so that they don't have to be so overwhelmed with the number of lunches that they have to produce, and maybe the quality of those satellites, uh, school lunches might improve if they were able to get, spread that wealth, as it were. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
No other comments. Motion approved. 6.4, Ms. Eileen Del Rossi requests the superintendent to apply the unfinished business portion to the agenda of the first and third Wednesday's school committee meetings. This way, voted into the school committee rules on inauguration day. Rules can be found on the January 3 meeting, Agenda 4.3, adoption of rules, second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Del Rossi?
I just wanted to make sure that there was always an unfinished business piece in the agenda, but I did have a conversation with Dr. Boyd, and he kindly explained that we did not have any unfinished business because it was the first and second meeting, so I understand why. But he said, well, I'll leave it up to whatever the final decision is, but I just think it's important that we don't forget anything that comes up, and we have a running list.
No other comment. Motion approved. 6.5. Ms. Thompson requests that the superintendent provide the committee with a report of ongoing records detailing the frequency of HVAC unit filter changes in each of the school buildings. This request will be ongoing as a measure to keep awareness and transparency of air quality efforts for both students and staff, seconded by Mr. Lay. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, though, this is kind of self-explanatory, it's really important to make sure that the schools are staying as safe as possible, and so for us to have a kind of a running, ongoing list, I believe that filters and HVAC units are supposed to be changed quarterly, so to have that information, to see when the last, kind of, when the last cleanings were done, is it really important to make sure that we can ensure the safety of our students and our staff?
No other comment. Motion approved. 6.6. Mr. Dakota and Mr. Lay ask the superintendent to furnish the school committee with the number of Chromebooks that are currently in the LPS, separating ones that are broken or unusable, and are those being used by our students. Also, what technology equipment does our LPS staff have available today, and how much is in need of repair or unable to be repaired? Do we currently have adequate staffing to ensure our technology needs are being met system-wide? Mr. Dakota, Mr. Lay, who wants to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that it's a fairly self-explanatory motion. I think that we need to be proactive in terms of how we look at the future here, because we don't know what's coming at us six months from now, a year from now, and will we have the ability to, at a moment's notice, take care of any of these particular technological needs that we have in terms of us? If we have to go to remote, I mean, if we have to do, have a lockdown or anything like that, that we're ready for it, and that we have a staff that can adequately take care of that, not just the staff that we have, our teachers having to do this from home and so forth, but will the equipment be sufficient, and will it take care, will it be taken care of by enough of a staff? That's my only concern. Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The technology equipments are meant to be plurals, but apologize, forgot the S. So pretty much concur with Mr. Dakota that we just want to make sure that we have the equipments, and also we have adequate staff to support the need, especially during this COVID time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comment. Motion approved. Motion 6.7. Ms. Doherty requests the superintendent provide the committee with a plan to increase compensation to retire LPS teachers working in the schools part-time or as tutors, so they receive the same rate as the current teacher's contract, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Ms. Doherty? I understand you have, we have the speakers. Do you want to go first, or you want the speakers to go first?
I'd like to let the speakers go first, please.
Sure, that'd be great. Call.
Susan Silk?
Good evening. My name is Susan Silk, and I'm a full-time ESOL teacher at the Abbeville Adult Education Center. Tonight, I would like to speak to you about the situation concerning tutor pay. So far this year, the teaching staff at the Abbeville Adult Education Center has helped over 1,300 students. Our teaching staff is comprised of five full-time teachers and 48 part-time teachers and counselors. Our entire part-time teaching staff consists of present and former teachers. We offer classes during the morning, afternoon, and evening at our headquarters at 408 Miramax Street, at Lowell High School, and at our satellites, and we provide both in-person and remote instruction. The part-time teachers and counselors who work for our program are responsible for curriculum development, lesson planning, assessment, testing, and helping students with other concerns, such as unemployment needs, food and fuel assistance, citizenship preparation, and childcare. They also attend staff meetings and participate in professional development opportunities. While we consider them teachers, the city categorizes them as tutors. Regardless of their title, they are 90% of the teaching staff at our school. As you know, the city settled with the teachers on a contract this fall. This included a well-deserved and long overdue $10-an-hour raise for tutors. It has been over 25 years since the tutors have received an increase in pay, and we very much appreciate the city's agreeing to this. In the past, tutors received their pay raise when the teacher's contract was settled. However, the city's tutors have not received one penny of the raise they expected. Instead, they have been told time and again that they will not get their money until another union in the city, one which has nothing to do with the tutors, settles its contract. In essence, the tutors are being denied what is theirs until that department, which actually allocates these very funds, has a new contract. For our program, the Abbeville Adult Education Center has already allocated the funds to cover the expected increase in pay for tutors. This is federal money that we applied for through the state and does not cost the city one penny. Yet even these funds, again, will not be dispensed to our part-time teaching staff until another union settles its contract. Our program will lose approximately $150,000 of dollars of our funding if these funds are not allocated immediately. Moreover, the state will not fund this part of our budget in the future if we do not spend the money to pay for our staff this year. And so I implore you, the members of the school committee, to insist on immediately providing equity to all the tutors who work tirelessly with the students in the Lowell Public Schools. This outrageous misappropriation of power, meant to deny hundreds of staff members what is theirs, must end now. I appreciate your giving me the opportunity to advocate for what our dedicated teaching staff deserves and what it was entitled to receive last fall. Thank you.
Donna Walsh?
My name is Donna Walsh. I live at 9FB Street in Methuen. I am currently a reading tutor at the Merklin School. I am proud to say I am a retired Lowell school teacher. I worked for 35 years as a classroom teacher at the former Green School, and then the Merklin School. I am very proud of my accomplishments throughout my tenure in Lowell. The 2019-2020 school year was my very last year of full-time teaching before I retired. Although I knew it was time for me to leave the responsibilities that a classroom teacher deals with, I was not at all ready to leave my kids. I truly love my students and my families. The pandemic and the abrupt school closing caused me to say my final goodbye to my 25 kindergarteners through a computer screen. I was heartbroken, to say the least. I knew that I needed to continue to teach. It was always, always my hope to come back to the Merklin to work as a reading tutor. I did not want to leave teaching or the Acre. I'm not sure if I ever will. Thankfully, in the fall of 2020, I was indeed hired as a tutor and got to work with many of my kindergarteners who had become first graders. I was in awe of my colleagues as they persevered, spending countless hours, nights, days, weekends, continuously researching new ways to communicate, teach, and plan lessons through a remote format. The teachers and the students continue to be so grateful for the support and help tutors give them. Retired teachers who become tutors walk into the role seamlessly with years of experience, expertise, and understanding of students' needs, as well as a very clear understanding of teachers' expectations. Teachers depend on us and trust us to do what we know and do it well. Reading tutors support teachers, providing students with small group instruction in order to help them master necessary reading strategies. As you know, reading skills give students access to every curriculum area. This support is crucial now more than ever, as students continue to recover from a tumultuous time since the pandemic began. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider discrepancy in retired teacher tutor pay. As you know, the new contract for teachers includes a well-deserved, long overdue increase from $30 to $40 an hour for voluntary pay. LPS currently actually offers after-school tutoring positions for $40 an hour, while retired teachers continue to be paid at a rate of $30 an hour during the school day. I would ask you to consider the fact that most retired educators have advanced degrees, whether it be a master's or a CAGS. We have taken countless courses to extend our knowledge of curriculum and instruction. We have many, many years of firsthand experience in our field, in our city of Lowell. These facts alone undoubtedly warrant equitable pay as retired part-time educators. In closing, I would like you to know my heart has been in the Acre since I was 22 years old, my very first day of teaching. I devoted my entire teaching career to the students of Lowell, as have many of my retired colleagues. We have no desire to teach anywhere else, but it's unfair that our decision to stay in Lowell means we have to sacrifice additional wages due to this unjust discrepancy. Although I have completed 35 years of full-time teaching, I wholeheartedly believe I have many, many quality years ahead to continue my love of teaching. Please give these concerns your strongest consideration. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to first say thank you to the speakers and to all the work that they're doing for our students and have been doing for many years. I think there's no doubt that a retired teacher brings a depth of experience and understanding that it's, it can't be surpassed, and especially during these difficult times, tutors have been those frontline people, helping to provide that one-on-one attention to our students. And I think the biggest thing that hit me about this whole issue was when I had a retired teacher write me that she's working, she was asked to work in an after-school program, and the teacher across the hall, who had one year under her belt, was getting $40 an hour while she was getting $30 an hour. I mean, it just is, it's unfair, and it needs to be rectified. So you'll see from my motion, I'm asking for a plan of how we can get this going and raise the rates so that it is fair across the district, and that's really my request. Thank you.
I was just going to say, a lot of our retired teachers, our tutors, are the ones that are doing our intricate Fuentes and Pennell testing and reading testing that is so important to the district that teachers don't have a lot of time for, so that's something so invaluable, to benchmark where our kids are and to really assess where they are. They have those skills, and they should be compensated for that. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
First of all, I want to thank the teachers. As a former teacher myself and a daughter of a 45-year veteran, I call them veterans, teachers, your work is definitely not in vain, and I want to thank you for that. I definitely think it's important that we look at this motion. You know, right now, these teachers, beyond being frontline, are the barrier between under education, and we need to make sure we take it as seriously as possible, so thank you for this motion.
Mr. Senior Class Senator, Mr. Forora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I wholeheartedly support our tutors, you know. Coming out of the pandemic, I feel like a lot of students are struggling, and a lot of us are relying on tutors to make sure we reach the academic standards that we want to reach. So hearing these stories, you know, it's, I'm really glad that we have like such loyal members to our Lowell Public School system, and we need to support them the same way they've supported us. So thank you for speaking. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to be absolutely redundant, but I completely concur with my colleagues on this issue. I think we need to be cognizant of the quality of the amount of work that our retired teachers bring to us, bring back to us, and bring back to our children. I think we need to make sure that we compensate them appropriately, so I strongly support this motion going forward. Thank you.
Just want to make a quick comment. It is a good motion, and I just want to ask Dr. Boyd quickly, do you know how many retired teachers that are being utilized in the Lowell Public School system right now?
We can get that number here for you, Mr. Mayor, to make sure we're specific. Ms. Turner will be able to provide that by the end of the meeting.
Thank you. No other comment. Motion approved. Motion 6.8. Ms. Doherty requests the superintendent collaborate with MasC and MAS to provide the committee with suggested actions that will amplify the concerns of LPS and districts across the state for flexibility regarding staffing shortages during the ongoing pandemic, such as extending availability of retirees, waivers for remote learning, or other measures that make sense for students, family, and staff, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I mean, this really came out of our last meeting when we discussed that we had applied for three waivers that were all denied by DESI, and then I got an email, I don't know if my colleagues are, from a student, you know, begging for help with the staffing shortage, with the, you know, the number of people out because of quarantine. And when I talked to the Mas Association of School Committees, I said, what are other districts doing? Because we're all hurting, we're all having the same challenges, and there's a sense that they're just not getting it at DESI. And in discussions with Dr. Boyd, the suggestion was, let's collaborate through him with these two associations, the Mas Association of School Committees, the Mas Association of School Superintendents, and because you know there's more power in numbers, right? So if all the districts coordinating and working together to get some relief so that we can provide the resources for our students and our families and our staff, we can maybe be heard. So that's the intention. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think perhaps if we could be in agreement on this one, perhaps may ask the superintendent to draft a letter from us to the powers that be, without renaming names, I think to clarify the needs that we all have, and perhaps reach out to other districts locally to see if they would concur and sign on to that. I think we need to address this issue, which is, we are at a crisis level, and we need to address it. Thank you.
No other comment. Motion approved. 7. Reports of the superintendent.
Your Honor?
Ms. Doherty?
Yes, may I ask for a suspension of the rules to move one item up on the agenda? I think we have a registered speaker here waiting to speak on the communication regarding staffing at the LeBlanc School, which is at the very end of our meeting, and I would just ask that we could move that up so that the speaker could address the concerns.
Motion to suspend the rules, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Communication from the Office of Teaching and Learning regarding staffing levels at the LeBlanc Therapurik Day School. Would you like the registered speaker to speak first? Madam Secretary?
Sharon Bazanz. My name is Sharon Bazanz. I live at sixty-eight Oakland Street in Lowell. I am a teacher at the LeBlanc Therapeutic School. And I want to start by saying that all schools are in need of mental health care. I am not discounting the importance of that need. However, we are a therapeutic school. The name is self-explanatory and quite literal. Our program is built on a behavior management plan. In order for this plan to work, we need to operate like a machine. If one cog is missing, it can fall apart very quickly, and that is what we have started to see very drastically. We have read the superintendent's report. It looks adequate, but looks are sometimes very deceiving. This year alone, we have had seven ambulances, six police calls, nine restraints, one hospitalization, and a weapon not just brought into the school, but used in the school. I have taught at the LeBlanc for over twelve years. This is not the norm, not even close, and it's only January. Our behavior specialist was brought down to half-time for the 2020-2021 school year. She serviced our school plus Lowell High. This was done by the former sped director, Mike Lovato. He said that he would revisit this move later. Well, now it is later, but our behavior specialist's time has been further reduced. She is now split between four schools. We have never asked for additional staff before, but now we are faced with less. This is very scary, quite simply, just scary, because not only are our staff and students in more danger mentally and physically, but we cannot effectively furnish all the therapeutic care that we must by law provide. And we have had three new students enrolled since Christmas, which is fine. That's our job. If there's a mainstream school that cannot handle a student, yes, bring them to us. But we have to be able to effectively provide the therapeutic care that they need, and we are understaffed. Yes, one cog missing can do that. Our program has been one of the most successful therapeutic programs out there. Just look at our percentage of high school graduates, and in ten years, we have only placed one student out of district. We have saved this district millions of dollars each year. However, this year, there is a likelihood that three students might be placed out of district, three, in one year, and it's only January. What's the difference? That one cog. We are asking that our behavior specialist, Karen Garabedian, be placed back into her original and desperately needed full-time position at our school. And, and lastly, I've been told by people that my New York accent and demeanor sometimes comes off as harsh and crass, but it's just passion. And I am truly humbled by the responsibility that I have to my colleagues, as well as to my students. Thank you.
We're lucky to have you here, and welcome to Lowell. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. So since we moved that up, if we look at the report on the staffing at the LeBlanc, it would appear that the numbers have not changed since 2017, even though the number of students has increased. But according to the former speaker, who is a current teacher there, the numbers have changed, specifically regarding the BCBA position. The other thing I wanted to point out, and, Your Honor, this really goes to you, because we used to have a school resource officer that made rounds, and one of the regular rounds was at the LeBlanc School, and that's not been happening. And I wonder if you could pursue that with the city to see if we could get that going again, because I think that these relationships matter. They matter to the students and obviously to the staff. So given this, the speaker and the concerns, I really am asking that we bring those staffing levels back to what they were. Bring that BCBA person back full-time, back to the LeBlanc, and I would make that in the form of a motion.
Make that a motion. Madam Secretary, would you read that motion?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, the, our special education director is here. There is a ripple effect with every decision that we make, and we do have significant staffing shortages across the district. So I would suggest we can provide a follow-up report and recommendation. The current special education director, again, is here, Dr. Vicente. He provided the committee with that data. I, I would suggest and encourage that the committee have a full analysis of the impact of any one decision prior to making that decision. And right now, we do understand that all of our schools require additional and significant support, and we have a significant number of vacancies for every position that has been created by this, by the committee, given the current labor market. So if the committee has additional questions of the analysis by Dr. Vicente, however, a movement and a shift of one employee from multiple schools to one school will have a ripple effect, and I am not confident that we can fill those as quickly as we have been able to fill them historically. So I would like to be able to provide the committee with Dr. Vicente's analysis of impact prior to making a movement of decision, the other schools that were identified by our great teacher that I've had the fortune of visiting her classroom and meeting her students. The benefit to a classroom is going to then require a shift of resources from other classrooms, and the other schools that were identified are obvious, obviously high need schools as well. So Dr. Vicente is here, if the committee has any questions.
Thank you for that comment. Ms. Doherty, in light of what Dr. Boyd said, would you want to have a, just make a comment, get a report back from the communication, like a report back, or would you want to make a motion to get a report?
Well, it, it makes me think of what happened to us at the last meeting when we approved to take away health as a graduation requirement with the assurances that we were going to have sex education built into the, the choir program and the other ROTC, and because of the timeliness of it, that we had to make that decision on faith. So I'm willing to wait till the next school committee meeting, but I don't think we had the luxury of just sitting back when we've had so many incident, and I know there's need across the district. I'd be the first one to argue it. We voted, this committee, well, the old, the members who've been here, social workers, more teachers, more payers. We've been trying to fill those gaps, but we have not been taking less staff from anybody, as far as I know. We've been trying to build up the staff. So my concern is the urgency. If the superintendent wants, you know, another couple of weeks, I, I mean, I would defer to my colleagues what your thoughts are. And certainly, if Mr. Vincenzi wants to speak with us about this tonight while he's here, I'm open to hear him, but I do feel a sense of urgency around the needs for this school and the students and staff there.
Okay, well, that's, you, you brought up the motion, and, you know, it was responded by Dr. Boyd, but it's up to you, if you have a motion, you want to make that seconded by one of your colleague. I'd be happy to have the Madam Secretary place as a motion, seconded by Mr. DeCotto. Or do you make a separate comment?
And I, well, I seconded, and, and I have a comment, too. I think if we can possibly get-
Just one moment, if just for clarification, so that everybody's on the same page. Madam Secretary, she stated motion. Would you mind repeating the, stating the motion? Okay, would you repeat that so she can write that down?
Just to return the BCBA staff person to the LeBlanc, to bring their staffing levels up to what they used to be.
That motion is seconded by Mr. DeCotto? Mr. DeCotto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand the, the problems that, that all districts are facing in trying to find staffing and the definite need that we have in terms of all of the schools in terms of social and emotional issues that our kids are having and our staffs are having. But if we can get a report before or by the next school committee meeting, by, so two weeks from, from today, it, it would help us to have a better grasp as to what the possibilities are to replenish those positions and, and give us a, a better idea of where we stand in terms of, of, of hiring and so forth. So I think if we, if we can provide it in that kind of context of a timeframe, I think would be probably, I know it's asking everyone to kind of wait and see, but I think if we can try to be a, a, a slightly, slightly practical, because we know everyone is struggling with these positions, trying to fill these positions. Everyone is. It's, it's that much difficult. Thank you.
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you have an opportunity of convenience of this agenda. You're going to name your subcommittees tonight. This would certainly be a discussion to understand the ripple effect. Remember, all of these services are controlled and managed by IEPs. The ripple effect here could be lack of service to a legally entitled service entity or agency from, from a provider to a student within, within an IEP. That's what I would like Dr. Vicente to be able to fully analyze, the ripple effect, the impact on others. Increasing service areas in one area has a ripple effect on others. Meaningful discussion for a subcommittee that then can bring back a recommendation to the full committee. I might suggest that and recommend that to the committee. Once you establish your subcommittees, let's have that meeting in the intervening week, and then we come back in the second week, and you know the full impact of the decision you're making. Dr. Vicente, head nod, is that going to be able to be met? Thank you. Another opportunity, Mr. Mayor, for the committee, given the convenience of tonight's agenda.
Ms. Doherty has a motion on the floor? Yeah, so Ms. Doherty has a motion on the floor, and-
You can either vote on it, or she can withdraw?
Yeah, we, do you want to, you want to roll call?
Do you want me to withdraw the motion? Is that what you're saying? I, I couldn't hear what you said.
We can either vote on it, or we can, you can withdraw.
Well, there's other speakers who, I, I don't want to move it to a subcommittee. I thought, I think that's going to delay it. I, I don't know why we couldn't do it before the full committee. By our next meeting.
We have the subcommittee meeting next week, and anything that, so that we would have something for this next meeting.
Oh, I see. Okay. If we could do that next week, right. But there are other speakers who want to speak, so I'm open to that.
We have to address this motion first, whether you're gonna, would like a vote on it, or you would like to withdraw it before we continue.
I'd like to move forward with it, whatever way is amenable to the committee and the superintendent. I don't want to withdraw it.
Okay. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Sure.
Thank you. The logic is that we pull one staff from another school, from the LeBlanc School, because the other school needs that service. So by taking that person back to the LeBlanc School, the other school is missing the service. Therefore, I, I think that I'm not, I cannot support this motion to bluntly take, tell the superintendent to, to put this service back to the, the Blanc School without considering the service from the other school. Therefore, I would recommend to take the superintendent's, superintendent's recommendation before we can do that. So I'm not going to support this motion.
We have a motion on the floor now, and you could vote, and then you could make a decision based on your vote. Ms. Thompson?
I would like to ask the maker of the motion to be willing to amend the motion so that we can move it forward into subcommittee next week, and then for, from that point, make the decision in the following school committee meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so for clarification, for the amendment, Madam Secretary, would you repeat the, the motion that is currently proposed on the floor?
So you're going to amend the present motion and have this motion be discussed after subcommittee meeting?
Correct, to then be brought before the body on the next sub, uh, school committee meeting.
You accept that? Seconded by Mr. DeCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Six days, one day approved.
So for clarity, Mr. clarity, Mr. Mayor, next week's subcommittee meeting, we'll discuss this item, and we will bring back a recommendation at the next committee meeting. Is that the outcome of the motion? All right, thank you.
We'll go back, continue on our agenda with the report of the superintendent, seven point one, COVID-19 update. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Hall, if you could, share the update for, for the committee for this week. We have been discussing, we've been discussing with the committee and at length the impact of staff shortages. I think in some ways, we haven't given enough discussion to the urgency of staff absence, of student absences. The COVID-19 exposures, quarantining, and the ripple effect and ongoing impact of this pandemic has also led to significant levels of absenteeism among our students as well. And it's important for us to consider and continue to balance our conversation that not only is it staff shortages and staff absences due to a result of COVID-19 and the related quarantining, there's also significant student absences. The committee should expect that in subsequent meetings, we will be bringing back to you recommendations for adjustments to policies, as well as resources to address student absenteeism that we are seeing increase to unprecedented levels, as is being experienced across the country, particularly in urban areas. So tonight, you're going to hear from Dr. Hall in terms of the COVID-19 update. I want to just emphasize to the committee, while that might not be the topic of discussion in terms of student absences, we are certainly experiencing it as much as every other urban center around the country, and that needs to be an attention of the policymaking body as well. And you will see subsequent meetings that we have recommendations there. With that, Dr. Hall?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Can we cue the slides, please? So again, as we say every week, here's the COVID dashboard where you can go and look at particular schools or the data as it changes each week. It also has our protocols, guidelines, and testing information and vaccine information. So every week, we've been producing the range of positives. Here's particular school information from January third to seventh. Here's January tenth to fourteenth. And here's our test and slay, stay and symptomatic testing slide. There was also an addendum. I'd like to thank our safety office for producing this. There was a webinar at one o'clock today where the state's proposing changes to pool testing. We do need to study it because the recommended changes would have some significant changes that we don't know necessarily would be a good fit for Lowell, but we're going to staff that and process it and bring it back for the committee's consideration after we talk to the Board of Health further about it. I did make initial contact, but we do need to collect more information. Here are the vaccine clinics that have occurred in January. Here are some of the numbers tested for three January to seven January, and here's ten to fourteen January. This week, we have noticed that there's a significant reduction in the number of positives, which is really good news. Our substitute fill rate has gone up, and our absences have dramatically gone down this week, which has taken a lot of stress off the staff. It's still not where we'd want it to be, but there's been significantly less COVID absences this week, which is great news for now. So here's our pool testing participation. I did want to point out that one of the reasons why our percentage of staff has gone down slightly, in my opinion, over the last few weeks- slightly, in my opinion, over the last few weeks, although it's not dramatic, is that if you test positive, you're then not allowed to participate in pool testing thereafter for a number of months. So that would, it's not obvious, but if you take out 50 or 60, for example, people per week, you're going to get a natural decline in the percentages. But even with that, understood with the number of positives we've had, we've gradually increased or stayed right around the margin of error on the number of people volunteering for testing, student-wise and staff-wise. So in my opinion, that means there has been a gradual increase of people participating in the program. So here's what I briefly mentioned about staffing impacts. You know, last week and the week before was certainly trying. We deployed a number of people from central office and elsewhere out to the schools to try to bridge the gap, which we thought was going to be very strenuous for a number of weeks. And again, the good news is this week, it seems to have relatively settled down a little bit. That doesn't mean the stress on the system is over, because again, we've only got about 60 to 65 participating substitutes on a daily basis. But I did want to stress for the committee and the community that the committee, in my opinion, allowed us to launch several initiatives, which I believe have greatly helped us in increasing the number of subs available, even though we only have 60 to 65 participating. If we didn't have those recruitment incentives in the other programs, I think we'd be in a much worse position. So again, thanks for assisting with that. I do believe it had a great help on what we're facing. In regards to filling positions, the committee has approved a number of people working directly in schools with the ESAR money. However, as Dr. Boyd stated earlier, there aren't an abundance of people out there looking for work. One point of stress has been trying to hire enough social workers. We only have about, I'd say, 30 to 33% of those positions filled that the committee has approved. So a lot of principals have requested the ability to hire people that can be certified as adjustment counselors and, or guidance counselors with adjustment counselor certification. So I do think that that would be a good idea, because those professionals certainly can do a lot of good with students. And not that they would have less of an impact than social workers, because each has their own focus areas, but certainly, I think it would be helpful to hire adjustment counselors if we have candidates when we can't get the social workers applying to the extent we need applications. So at the end of that last slide, I do pose that question to the committee, if the committee is inclined to authorize that.
Mr. Mayor, and that guidance would need to be in the form of a motion if the committee is so inclined, additional flexibility to, so that we can fill these hiring and fill these positions. If the committee is so inclined, that would need to be in by way of formal motion, so we have that guidance in the record.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick questions. I know that when we had initially approved this, we had also approved a backup plan of, I believe, working with a recruiting company or contractor who'd be able to fill the positions if we weren't able to. Has that not come to fruition?
Ms. Turner, do you have an update on that, status of that?
Actually, I believe Mr. Vicente could give an update on that, as far as where they stand with the research on what companies are able to provide despite the staff shortages.
Sure, Mr. Rossi?
Wasn't there just 29 social workers hired? Or was it different positions? What was the position that there were 29 of them, I think?
You are correct on that, Ms. Del Rossi. The committee authorized a social worker at each school, which we advertised. However, we've only been able to fill approximately eight of those. So there's 21 positions where there weren't enough candidates. So that's why we're bringing this back, asking for permission to use adjustment counselors to get counselors in the schools if we can't find social workers.
Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question through you to Mr. Hall, Dr. Hall. I'm wondering if on this report, we're looking for the trends, so if we can have maybe another column, a couple of columns that have like two or three data prior, so we can see the trends of the positive cases, I know that would be possible. So that's my comment. That would be nice if we could have that. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Any answer to my initial question?
Okay, you want a speaker to go now? Okay.
Sure, can I just ask for clarification on the question? I just want to make sure that I can provide a full answer.
Oh, sure. I'm just trying to, when we had initially passed this motion to bring on these additional positions, we did our plan of hiring the 29, and then a secondary plan of working with a recruiting company or a contracted service provider. I don't know if it's like a South Bay, I don't know, you know, what was being considered, so that we had a backup plan that if we couldn't directly hire these people, we'd work with an agency who could bring them in to fill those positions. So I'm just curious where we are with Plan B.
Sure, thank you. So I've done some work on my end, I've had some communication with Ms. Desmond, with Ms. Turner, reaching out to a variety of agencies. I will say that one of the challenges, and I would, to no surprise of anyone, is that there's a lot of districts right now that have a lot of needs, right? So a lot of the agencies that I've spoken with have indicated, you know, their own challenges with being able to reach out in service and being very honest about their capacity, whether or not they could service us in person, whether or not that their services at this point had to go fully remote, and all the options in between. I have recently spoken with one agency and gotten some specific information with them, who has some connections in terms of being, have a greater outreach in the way that they do their contracting, so that they can expand out their search for different service providers that could benefit the district. So I have just recently received that information, and I've submitted it to my colleagues at Central Administration to vet that document, so that we can make sure that it fully services our needs. And in the interim, I've continued to do the outreach with further agencies. I get a lot of email from a lot of agencies, so I've been able to do a lot of conversations with this. Fortunately and fortunately, the people have been pretty forthright about the information, and there's just a lot of challenges right now in being able to meet the needs of districts, you know, across Massachusetts and I presume across the country.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
My only other question through you and Mr. Mayor to the superintendent and his team would be, so understanding these, the divergence between these job titles, if we're looking for the adjustment counselor, I believe is the one, what exactly is the parity between these roles? Are they both included in LSAA? Are they defined? Are the qualifications that markedly different?
Dr. Boyd?
Dr. Hall, can you provide that clarification, please?
So my understanding is if we didn't have a social worker, they wouldn't have the licensed clinical social worker designation. They are both in LSAA, and I did some research, I had a discussion this morning with LSAA, where, you know, a key indicator is not all guidance counselors are adjustment counselors, but most are. So would we be requiring a counselor certification in order to come in? So it wouldn't just be any guidance counselor we were hiring, they would have to have the adjustment counselor license.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I do think it's important, I mean, and we all recognize what the market is like right now. So filling these positions is a challenge across the board. So making this kind of a shift, I think, is warranted, because we want to have the, we want to have the expertise in our classrooms. But I do think it's important that we maintain licensure, that we, you know, retain our commitment to having trained, qualified people providing these services who, you know, which are going towards our students who are struggling right now. So, thank you very much, but I would be comfortable with that moving forward. Thank you.
Any other comment?
I'm sorry, so do you need a motion to make that happen? I'd make that in the form of a motion to allow the administration to move forward, including guidance counselor and adjustment counselor as exceptions or replacement titles for the currently empty social worker positions. That could be worded better, Mary.
Okay, motion on floor by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi. Seven yeas, approved.
No other comment? 7.2 FY22 budget update. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Ms. Arnold, FY22 budget update for FY22. As the video, January, we get the accelerated timeline into development of FY23's budget. We will start through the governor's proposed budget, that begins the initiative process of budget development for FY23. So this update...
This update here, thank you, Ms. Turner. This update here for FY22 is both your mid-year update, it should and will likely be your last sole FY22 update, and we will start to move into conversations that'll also include, should this state legislature and the governor adhere to their typical timeline, you should start to hear more and more information as we move through the FY23 budget timeline. Ms. Turner, we'll take you through the current status of FY22, as well as the planned timeline for development of FY23. With that, Ms. Turner, if you can provide, you need the control, Dr. Hall? Thank you, sir. Ms. Turner, if you could, and certainly any questions subsequent to the presentation, Mr. Mayor, or within the presentation, how would you like to entertain questions?
You may continue with the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so as you know, each budget presentation that we do prepare will have a continuous review of the two budget years simultaneously, so that we can maximize the funding streams. This presentation will cover what is our current FY22 general fund forecast, what priorities can be addressed immediately in FY22, what is the current status of our revolving accounts, what current FY22 issues remain that need to be addressed, what are our next steps as we plan for FY23. The current budget review, if I, we have project, we have difficulty right now projecting year-end balances, you know, because of the tumultuous time we're facing. Due to staff shortages and supply chain obstacles, we're seeing a significant savings again. We don't want to lose any of that, we don't want to return it, but unfortunately, due to the staff shortages and supply chain obstacles, we are having to strategize constantly. So this is requiring a continuous analysis and update constantly, so that we can, you know, because it could fluctuate and change at any given point. This spreadsheet is trying to show you ongoing fund management. We're trying to strategize multiple funding streams, like general fund, grants, ESAR, revolving fund balances. So as you can see, two of the main projections that we see savings in would be salaries, a $4.5 million surplus is estimated. Out-of-district tuition, we're estimating a $500,000 surplus, and that would occur due to students leaving the district. This is totaling $5 million. One of our main objectives that you, as the school committee, have already approved is for us to continuously maximize our revolving accounts. So I would suggest a million dollars automatically go into maximize revolving accounts. That would leave a total budget flexibility right now of $4 million. Before I even go further with that, I want to emphasize that this is based upon things that I know, like salaries and transportation and out-of-district tuition. There are many contracts that we have, like I'll use the translation contract. If we have a $250,000 contract, but they're unable to provide the services due to staff shortages, we may find at the end of the year that there are many contracts that are not obligated, which means we may have additional savings. So this is really important for us to watch it closely. But if we take that budget flexibility of $4 million and go to the next column, where we show reinvestments based on priorities and needs, the $4 million, the first investment we would suggest is the digital investments. If we invest in approximately 200 more clear touch panels for every class in the district to have a clear touch panel, along with the necessary desktops that connect to it, we would, with this $1.2 million, every single classroom in the district would be, would have the updated technology. That leaves a remaining flexibility of $2.8 million. The section below that just shows things that we're currently researching, which include staff recruitment and retention, data systems, facility improvements, FY23 offsets such as prepaying for supplies and curriculum needs. We could fund the sped stabilization again, we could delay grant spending. The next slide shows a priority for, I mean, all of our priorities for leveraging forecasted FY22 line item surpluses. So again, we can maximize our revolving accounts. We can invest more in digital learning, and that has immediate action next to it, because we would like to vote on, ask you to vote on that in the transfer tonight. We could leverage the surpluses by investing in staff recruitment and retention, data systems, well, I actually already went over this in the previous page, but facilities, FY23 offsets, and again, to delay grant spending only when there's a carryover option. There are some grants that we must spend this year, so we would exhaust those and free up local money, and then put that into a sped stabilization before we would lose it. The next slide is a projection of ESAR funds. We have available surpluses within the local budget, which has enabled greater flexibility with the ESAR funds. If we have to spend something, we're going to spend the local budget, so it doesn't go back, that would allow us to carry over the ESAR funds and to spend that in the future years. The original ESAR budget was $30 million in year one, now the estimated is $9.7 million, and that's because of these reasons. We had several recommended positions that were placed in suspense by the school committee. We delayed spending of ESAR funds for the facilities, penned in a joint meeting, and we also have several positions that remain within the recruitment phase, again, due to staff shortages. The next slide is just an updated spreadsheet that we shared with you during the ESAR planning phase, and it shows all of our key obligations, like high tech, I mean, high-quality teaching, strategic interventions, extended learning, non-instructional cost, and parent engagement activities. And so this spreadsheet will show you, purple is those things that we're still trying to proceed with, but that have been delayed while we continue analyzing them. The red are those areas that you asked for us to re-allocate. We took it out of the main budget and gave it to the schools, and the green is how they chose to spend it. So again, red is what we took, we decided to take away, and green replaced the red. The gray is current costs that are still being researched as well. The next slide is just giving you an update on the, like a projection on revolving accounts. There are four main revolving accounts that I think are important for you to know about. The first one is the use of facilities. I do believe we'll end the year at 200,000, because we're not, we're spending local money before we spend anything from a use of facilities account. The food service revolving, we had depleted that account a few years ago, and we've repaid the funds. Now we actually have the opposite problem. You're really only supposed to have three months of operating expenses. We exceed that, so we have applied with DESI to, you have to get approval before you spend it, anything over 5,000. So we've applied to DESI to invest the excess balances on prioritized and eligible investment areas like outdoor refrigeration, food trucks, water fountain systems, milk coolers, warmers, and other cafe improvements. The circuit breaker revolving, we maximize it, but then we use it during the year. As you know, our out-of-district tuition, if you look at that, but a portion in the budget book, approximately 5 million is spent with local funds, and the other 5 million is spent using... million is spent using circuit breaker funds. So when we deplete that, we do have an opportunity to invest some of our savings back into this account. And eight-three-nine-five is the sped stabilization account. You know, as we invested in that initially last year, we put one-point-three-million dollars. If we do continue to have a surplus, which we have many needs, so it's not necessary, necessarily going to happen, but if we did have additional funds left over, rather than let it flow back to the city or other places, we could fund the sped stabilization account to help us with our sped cost in future years. And this next slide is just giving you an update on current FY twenty-two issues that we think you should know about. As you know, it was brought, brought forward from the school committee that we should notify you when we have a bad bill situation, and we don't like the word "bad bill." We just use that because that's what the city calls it. As a matter of fact, the language in the law states that it's, a bad bill is something that if you don't have the appropriation to pay for it on your own, and you need to ask the city for it. We don't need to ask the city for it. We actually do have funding. In August of two thousand twenty, we were told by City Hall and the state that we could not use the water fountains in the schools. And with the dilemma with that is seven CFR two-ten demands that schools must make potable water available and accessible without restriction to children at no charge in the places where the lunches are being served. So based on the section five-point-two of the Aramak contract, Aramak started to provide bottled water at the cost of sixteen cent a bottle, and we estimated the number of bottles to provide to the students for breakfast and lunch would be two bottles per day. So Aramak started providing that. Since school did not reopen to all students until April of two thousand twenty-one, the cost from September to April was minimal. It was, until the last three months of the school year, when the students returned, that's when the cost increased. We were invoiced by Aramak in July of two thousand twenty-one, but we were told by Aramak that their leaders had told them that we are not allowed to charge the water to the revolving account that, like we thought we could. We thought, just like milk or any of the reimbursable meals, that we would be able to charge to the revolving account, but we were told that we couldn't. That did not concern us, because we do have plenty of local budget money and ESR funds that would have covered that. Unfortunately, when, that means, if it wasn't fallen under that Aramak revolving account, then that means it did not have a purchase order. It did not go through the normal flow of things, so then it, and it's for the previous year, so it's a bad bill or a delayed bill. So we do need to work with City Hall. We have been working with City Hall on how to handle that. In addition to that, a purchase order was opened in August of two thousand twenty-one for the coming school year, the fall of two thousand twenty-one FY twenty-two, but it was incorrectly used. They did not know of the, the ruling that we could not use revol, the revolving account, so the purchase order was set up with the revolving account number. So when the check was cut, it was cut from the revolving account, which should not have happened. So the way it was handled is it was deposited back into that revolving account. After discussing this with the city, we agree that it could have been handled differently. We could have voided the check. Now we know that, so if anything like this ever happens again, we have different alternatives. But we are working with City Hall right now on procurement accounting and how to get the bills paid right now. And in the meantime, while we go over this with the solicitor on whether section five, five-point-two with the contract, the Aramak contract does indeed cover water, we, we went to the state contract list, and we're getting emergency water off the state contract list until we figure this out. If we do find that this contract does cover the water, and the reason, let me just interject and say, the reason there's a discrepancy with that is there's conflicting language in the contract. One part of the contract, section five-point-two, says that we can cover water, but there's another section in the contract that says you cannot pay Aramak anything that's non-reimbursable. So it's conflicting language. So once we clear that up with the solicitor, we will try to go back and use Aramak rather than the state contractors, because they're telling us the same thing. WB Mason told us they cannot meet our demand, that our school district is too big. So we get, we have to constantly fight to figure out who can meet the demand and how will they deliver it. So if we go back to Aramak, the convenience and the logistics are far better. The next slide is just a summary slide that I have shared with you in the past, and it's just trying to show you estimated dates of what we'll cover at our presentations, such as determining the SBB pool, WACs, fair student funding, governor's initial budget, and so on. And then at the bottom, the important parts are, we did try to add a subcommittee during certain months, so that prior to May, just in case you want it to, if you choose that, we can work together and come up with the dates. And again, in May, you'd have a May fifth presentation, May tenth and another date, if needed, as public hearings, and then May nineteenth would hopefully be the budget adoption time, since the city has to adopt their budget in early June. And finally, the last sheet, I won't go over it in detail, because we already shared this with you, but the things to remember is that we need to, we have to consistently review multiple budget years right now, and multiple funding sources, being that we have significant grant money right now. We must spend the funding streams with the shorter timelines first. So an example, and I know I've shared this, but I emphasize it so that we, we're clear, is we will make decisions such as social workers, if they were supposed to hit the ESR grant, but we have money left in the local, we're leaving the cost on the local and not moving it until we know that we've depleted the local, then we'll move it to the grant. So that's just to make sure that we strategically use all fund balances. We'll also continue to present on the current year with projected closeout separate from the FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget, since they relate to each other.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm somewhat confused, again, about the water issue. Are we actually getting water for our schools now? And is it coming through Aramak? And are they getting paid? And, or who's not, I mean, where's it coming from?
So the, we, they are getting water, and that's one of the, one of the things that we faced during a pandemic, right? We had to provide water for our students. They were wearing masks without any water source. They could not use the water fountains. So we have been adamant about making sure that everyone is provided with water. When we learned that lower high had run out, when WB Mason said they were unable to fulfill that order, we reached out to every vendor on the state contract, and we, and they want our, some people can do it, and they wanted our business, like Nestle, Nestle. They were able to bring it, eight-hundred cases the following morning to lower high, so they did get water. One other thing we have been strategic with is if we know that one school has a surplus and another school has a shortage, if the water delivery is not going to occur, we can borrow from one school to, you know, and give to another. But yes, we are providing water.
Good. Thank you very much.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually have a number of concerns, so I'll start with the water, because we are talking about the water. There's a couple of points in here. PO was issued and misused, relying on Aramak to tell us whether we can use the water towards our food revolving account. As my colleagues may recall, we made a mistake on revolving accounts a couple of years ago. We had to pay two-million dollars back. I'm just not sure why we'd be relying on Aramak. And how much are we talking about in terms of bills over what timeline? So I have that question. I want an answer, but I have other points I'd like to make, if I could, regarding this report. So what is the bill that we are in dispute about, or the invoice, or whatever, that we're trying to work out? How much is it for?
Okay, that, do you want me to answer both pieces of what you said? You know, first of all, the concern about why would we rely on Aramak?
Right.
Just to clarify, we did not rely on Aramak. We relied on Aramak's contract, and Aramak's contract, section five-point-two, states that we can purchase water, and we have, in the past, always purchased water under that. Because of a pandemic, the amount of water that we were providing escalated, I mean, it just, it increased drastically in April. So it wasn't that we were relying on, on Aramak. It's the, and then, when Aramak emphasized about the revolving account, that they had heard during their state meeting, that we cannot do that, first of all, I had already reached out to DESI on that, so to confirm on my own, because I am very good with making sure we don't repeat mistakes of the past. So that's why our revolving account balance now has the opposite problem, where we have a lot of money, not, you know, because I'm doing it the way that we're supposed to do it. So we don't, we did not rely on Aramak. That, we relied on their contract. And as far as the bill amount, the bill amount for last year that we received in July was for a hundred-and-nineteen thousand. Had it been able to hit the revolving account, it wouldn't have mattered that it came in July for the previous year. It's when we real, found out, I found out, and Aramak found out, that we cannot hit the water, I mean, the revolving account, that's when we knew that we have to treat it like a bad bill and get permission, being that it's a previous year. But just to clarify, it's not just the hundred-and-nineteen. There's also bills for September, October, and November, but again, we have to treat it like, go work with the city to get this paid.
So if I could follow up with that, and then I'll go off the water issue. When did you discuss this with the city? And did you work with the auditor? When did you do that? When did you work, did you get involved with the law office regarding the contract? When did these things happen?
I actually don't have the exact date, but we, it was in, when I, when it was brought to my attention that there was an unpaid bill, because I was not aware that there was an unpaid bill. So when the bill was brought to us in July, I started getting an email from our Aramak asking for payment on it in September. That's when I started talking to the auditor. The auditor changed. We had staff turnover in our office. We lost a person that had been with us for sixteen years. She left. There was a lot of turnover. So then they had to email me, because they were emailing the wrong people. So I ended up having a meeting with the city CFO, the new auditor, and the solicitor on the water issue, and then we were all going to research things. Like, for instance, the solicitor was aware of the conflicting language in the contract as far as one piece saying you can't pay Aramak for the non-reimbursable cost, but yet, section five-point-two allows us to buy water normally. So she was going to talk to the auditor separately to see what, if they could possibly amend the contract and change the language. And since then, I don't, I don't believe, I don't know if that, if they had that conversation yet.
So I think it's concerning, as I'm sure you can sense from my voice here, that we have these issues. It really, I think, speaks to our lack of financial oversight. You mentioned in the report yourself about a PO being issued and misused.
The what issue?
A PO being issued and misused here. There's a lack of financial oversight that I think is concerning, and I would just like to ask the mayor, perhaps we could get some input from the city side, the auditor, about their take on what's happened, so that we make sure this doesn't happen again. And then to segue into my final comment, and this speaks to something Dr. Boyd had mentioned earlier. He said, this is the last report we're going to get on FY twenty-two, and I'm just wondering, when are we going to get the year-to-date financial reports, so we can see a line-by-line, this is what we budgeted, this is what we've actually spent? Because without that, it's impossible to really monitor our finances. When you speak in general terms, oh, we think we're going to have more in this bucket. We might have less in that bucket. I mean, we're talking about over two-hundred-million dollars, right? That's the budget that we are responsible for. I believe it's that number, right? And I had asked for that, and I thought we were going to be getting those, and I don't see how this could possibly be our last. And then later on in the meeting, there's going to be more requests for, for spending, when we haven't seen a line-by-line budget versus actuals, which we always used to get, and which I thought you agreed you were going to be able to provide us.
If I could, Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Boyd?
So no statement that this is the last discussion about FY twenty-two. The statement was that each subsequent budget update, if the governor and the legislature follows their timeline, will include an accelerated discussion on FY twenty-three as well. You are always in the process of January being the time when you're closing out FY twenty-two and starting up planning for FY twenty-three. So this is the last conversation that you should expect, where you won't have more information about revenue and beginning to make decisions about FY twenty-three. That doesn't mean that you won't have information on FY twenty-two. FY twenty-two will continue all the way until June thirtieth. So that's important to note, that you are going to continue to get information there. I also think that you've seen significant additional fiscal oversight and fiscal controls. The district is in a solid, as solid, if not more, more solid position financially than it has been at any time in recent history. So that's a commendation to Ms. Turner, her staff, and everyone's due diligence, including the committee around the fiscal controls. So it's important to also accentuate and recognize the positives. What you're referencing here is a circumstance of immediate crisis management around the issue of having to shut down immediately all of our water service within our buildings. What Ms. Turner is referring to is the challenges of adapting existing contracts to a pandemic management situation, and the circumstances that she has found herself in, and the attempts and many steps that she's taken to make sure that kids, students, and families do not feel the burden of the management challenges to manage through a crisis. And I believe she's done an inordinate amount of work and an incredible job to make sure that the challenges have not been experienced at the student level. Unfortunately, in terms of accounting and contracting, the contracts were not established and set up pre-two thousand twenty, around a pandemic environment. So when you start to manage this environment, you see the conflicts that she's suggesting. And in one of those cases, I can tell you, in typical times, when we shut down water, we shut down schools. We don't go immediately to shifting, as we did here, to bottled water service, but we're not the only school district that faced that, which is why you have partners and partner agencies that step up and say, we can meet that need. So I think here, certainly you've got questions, you've got concerns, and those are valid questions and concerns. We should also recognize and accentuate the incredible amount of work that's been done, that's gotten us to this point, that we do have to make sure that we make, we do everything going forward, that we learn from the things that we did in the past, but those were immediate steps that had to be taken because of a pandemic that we all faced, that no one could forecast. And water is a need that we have to provide for in all of our schools. We don't have a choice or a chance to adjust and to contract out and to build out new water supplies overnight. We have to adjust, and we have to address it, and I think Ms. Turner's office did an incredible job there. There is this need here, which is being investigated, is being analyzed, and it is something that will be continued to provided updates to the committee, but I don't want to suggest that it's a result of absent fiscal controls. It's a result of us finding ourselves in crisis management overnight, as did every organization and every industry across this country, and I might say across the world, given the fact that, what we've all experienced since March two thousand twenty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Del Rossi?
I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Turner. I know there was an overabundance. There was tons of water at the high school in the start of the year, which was greatly needed. And every time I would send my school to, my, my son to school, I would say, what do you want to drink? He's like, don't worry, Mom, there's plenty of water at school. So thank you. I just want to mention that this is going to go to the finance subcommittee, too, right? And so that we can have more discussions about that. And I do think maybe in between this meeting and the next meeting, if we have the subcommittees, we can get more into it. I, I just think that there's so much involved, that it's really hard to break it all down right here, right now. Thank you.
There's, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just by way of information for the new members, if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. Those of you that will be assigned to the finance subcommittees, there typically is a significant amount of time that is asked of you from this time going forward. The finance subcommittee is one committee that does meet regularly and frequently during the budget approval and adoption process, so you will want to keep that in mind. I haven't seen the mayor's assignment. The other, with the subcommittees, even though you might not be in a voting seat, it is typical, and I might say, not even typical, it's a standard, that all committee members attend those meetings as we go through the budget process, while it's an obligation of those that are assigned to the meeting. Everyone typically attends those subcommittee meetings, and I believe through the course of my time, it's been a continuous conversation with Ms. Martin, who's usually the, who had been the finance subcommittee chair for both the prior terms, as we go through the budget approval process. So you're right on that, Ms. Del Rossi, and even if you're not part of the subcommittee, I would continue to recommend that we utilize the continuous subcommittee process that we have in the past, because it, it is... the continuous subcommittee process that we have in the past, because it, it is, the information is quite dense and quite fast-moving going forward with the budget.
Ms. Turner.
Yes, hi. I just wanted to follow up and thank you, Dr. Boyd, for stating that it was not, you know, a lack of oversight on the finances, because I can assure you, that's not happening. I agree that we are in our, in a very strong financial position. And I, but I have to say that we are still capable of mistakes. So if an employee did a purchase order and they charged a revolving account rather than another account, that is definitely not lack of oversight. That was a mistake during a pandemic. And I also wanted to let you know that I, I'm going to be honest with you and say that I would probably do it again, because you know what? There are conflicting laws. There was a law that said, we cannot let our children go without water. And mostly, I just wanted to also say that we are capable of mistakes, and we do work with the city, despite the fact that we don't always get responses from the law office. But we do seek their guidance all the time. So if we could not get through to them to determine what we should do next, now after the fact, we are trying to work with them to see, what do we do next time something like this happens?
Ms. Doherty, done, Mr. Lay.
Thank you. I just want to reaffirm my question about getting the year-to-date financial reports, the actuals, line by line. I do think that it is very important that without that information, it's impossible for us to really see where we are financially. And I know there's been concerns with response or not response to law. So my question to you, if I may go through the mayor directly to Ms. Turner, I know that we had an agreement with the law office that they were going to meet. Can you tell me if you've had meetings? If you've not had meetings, who's been canceling them or postponing them? What's been the situation?
Ms. Turner.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. No, we have met, and then there were, we had holidays. And then I caught COVID, so I wasn't here. So, no, we had one meeting.
One meeting.
So, and as far as the year-to-date budget report, you can have that at the next meeting. And we are in the process of doing a cleanup with recoding, so we didn't want to send something that did not match the budget book, but that will be given to you next, next meeting with any explanations ready and available. So you can have that, yes, absolutely.
Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question had just been answered. I wanted to know if Ms. Turner had a chance to meet with the law department, so she just answered that question. Thank you.
Okay, if no other comment, we'll go to 7.4, enrollment report. Dr. Boyd.
Okay, I think you, you have 7.3 extended learning time, but the, did you intentionally skip over that, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
7.3? It's a, the statement there is just, it's provided for the committee as a report of progress. Given staffing needs for tonight's meeting, I would request that the committee, if you have any questions on that report, please provide it to me under separate cover, and I will facilitate those answers to any of those questions. With that, Mr. Mayor, I can move on to 7.4 unless there are any questions that are pressing on the floor. Thank you.
Any comment from the committee members?
Thank you. 7.4, Ms. Phillips, can you provide a quick summary for the committee on this month's enrollment report? This, too, is submitted as a report of progress.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So this report mirrors the reports that have been submitted the last two months, the same format. So I can stand for any questions.
Need a motion to accept reporter superintendent 7.1 through 7.4 as reports of progress by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Mon. All in favor? 7.5, education. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Lay, second by Mr. Dakota. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Eight, new business. 8.1, I have the establishment of the subcommittee. I'm gonna hand these out real quick. There are two pages to each. I can have my assistant forward a digital form to everyone tomorrow as well. Need a motion to approve the subcommittees by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Doherty. Just, I forgot to make one quick comment. I want to thank all of you for providing me your preference and your ranking. I wish you all the best of luck. I look forward to see you shining and accomplishing many good things in the subcommittees. Thank you. 8.2, roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Approved. Seven yeas.
8.2, budget transfer. Need a motion to approve a budget transfer of $1,367,588.36 by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Mon.
I have a question.
Any discussion?
You want to go first? Go ahead.
Ms. Mon.
Thank you very much. I just had a question. I know that we, we are going through these, you know, regularly and, and understanding kind of some of the shifts when we're moving from, you know, like, some professional development moving towards purchases of instruments, things like that. So those kind of school site changes that happen. I'm just curious, really more than anything else, especially this number two, moving monies in to cover the salary for an established position. So if, there's a story behind that, or kind of what prompted that?
Ms. Turner, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
Yes, as I was just explaining, we are, like I said, we're recoding. This position, this person was charged to the assistant business manager on page 1,400 prior to this. We had to create an account that would show up under the transportation coding, so, and they've had turnover. We've, we sent it to the previous interim auditor, and it was never done, so it was recently done, and so we now can transfer the money into it.
So it was coming from just the, yeah, it was just coming from the generalized salary fund? Is that?
Where, how are we funding it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're funding it through just accounts that don't have any spending against it. We, I don't know if we shared this with you in the past, but the current end-of-the-year report does not require us to report by math, science. We, our year-to-date budget report that you would get would have thousands of accounts. So what we were trying to do is do it just according to the end-of-the-year report, where we put middle, I'll give you an example, a middle school teacher, he, they could be a math and science teacher, so there's no consistency.
Right, so that's what I'm asking though. So that's just a general salary account?
Yes, yes.
As opposed to?
One that's not being used, yes.
But is that an individual salary account, or is it the salary account? It seems like there's a salary account that anything that's not allocated is going into, like if you have vacancies or whatever, that there's some general salary and wage account that then that money is being shifted into this? Am I understanding that wrong?
No, like, there are many different salary accounts, and when we're doing it, we do a review using the very report that Ms. Doherty wants. So when we look at that, if we see an account that says, in this case, the professional development classroom teacher account, if that wasn't used, and then we find that we put money into it because it was funded last year, but that the teachers are all being charged to the line above it, we now know that's available funds, so we are moving it from that. But there is one account that you're, I think you're referring to, which is the collective bargaining. Before it was, right now, that's what we're doing. You know how we had that lump sum figure that we had to put somewhere until we, until we ratified? Now we're moving all that money all around. So we're moving it from that big salary account that had several million dollars in it, into all the individual accounts.
But we're not going to get transfer reports on all of those?
No, not necessarily, because if, if it's within the same DOE function code, which that big account, most of it, it's in 2,300, which is instruction. So most of our cost teachers' parus, so you won't get it for all that. But when we spread it, the raises to the other ones that are not, like, say, social workers that might be under three thousand, you might see transits for that. And that, we had no choice with that. We had to wait, we had to put it in a lump sum account until the contracts were ratified.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
8.3, consideration of updated job description and permission to post district safety coordinator.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the committee remembers, you made one adjustment on this particular position, given the status and the state of affairs within the district at a given time previously. The recommendation here is to restore it back to its original status within the district, given the importance of safety and the glowing and growing spotlight on school safety throughout the country and currently here within local public schools during the course of this pandemic and moving through this pandemic. Dr. Hall can provide further summary, but again, to remind the committee and for new members, this, this position was previously coded as a coordinator. We adjusted it to a specialist, given the evolution of the position and the needs of the district at that time, and now there's an opportunity here to repost it, and our recommendation is to bring it back to its original status as a coordinator position. Dr. Hall can provide additional information, additional brief summary, the recommendations approval as written. Dr. Hall?
Sure. Just to emphasize for everyone what's in the packet, so the, the two different salary schedules have been supplied. The detail behind that, though, is coordinators typically work over three weeks more than district support specialists. So while there's a increase in pay, it also represents more than three weeks more of additional work, and that will include a lot of work for planning in the summer and potentially running testing for summer school. So with that district support schedule previously, we were still anticipating paying additional days of work, for work in the summer, whether it's through the summer school schedule or otherwise. So I'm just trying to explain, it's not that much of a jump, as it may appear, if you didn't know that information about the different days that the two positions have.
Ms. Mon?
I'd move to approve the shift. Thank you.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
8.4, consideration of supplemental payment of $125 per day for unaffiliated personnel who serve as substitute teachers during periods of required COVID-related emergency classroom coverage. Mr. Dakota? Second by, I thought it was discussions, Ms. Doherty? Roll call, please. You want to make a comment?
I'd like to ask some questions about this.
Sure.
My understanding is, we have people in the LSAA unit who are substitute teaching, and they are not getting extra pay. I'm wondering, the same with parus or teachers, what, who are the unaffiliated people that would be getting $125 a day on top of their regular salary? Could we maybe list some of those position titles?
Sure.
Dr. Boyd?
Yes, thank you. So remember, there was a part of our executive session that was abbreviated, so this actually establishes equity throughout the system, not, not a difference. And I'm sorry, we couldn't get to those discussions because of our agenda previously, but I would like to leave those conversations within that executive agenda regarding portion of the conversation and question you just asked around affiliated employees. Dr. Hall, can you provide the examples of unaffiliated employees?
Sure. So, for example, people in the IT department that volunteered would qualify. I do want to clarify that this wouldn't be any executive-level position such as chiefs, some of us substitute. This certainly wouldn't apply to us, but it would be people below our level who went in and substituted. A lot of the people in the equity department stood up and volunteered, and of course, they have duties that they've got to do to catch up as well. So there would be a lot of unaffiliated personnel in the equity department, for example, and there are people working in IT that make up the majority of these personnel.
Yeah, so as a way to clarify, and again, for the public, when somebody covers and substitutes during the day, it extends their workday because they've, they're required to meet the standard functions of their work because of the staffing shortages that we're experiencing across the community and the needs of our community to provide those services. So their standard hours then shift into the evening and out-of-school time, because during the school day, they're providing coverage and substitute teaching in a classroom, hence the reason for the additional compensation. But again, the intent of the, of the organization, and certainly the intent of our recommendations, is pay equity across the system. Again, I'm sorry that our, our conversation extended and we couldn't get to the fullness of the executive session, so I'm going to leave that conversation there. But these are employees that would be expected and have committed to working extended hours into the evening to provide emergency coverage, plus meeting the expectations of their job duties as best they can in non-traditional hours, and it's compensating them accordingly. And these are central office-staffed employees typically, but in many cases, non-supervisory level. These are support functions throughout the organization. In some cases, they may be supervisory leveled, but it's requiring them to work into the evenings, and they are not individuals such as those that are in front of you, whose expectations of their contract is that they're available at all hours to the committee.
Have we looked at what the cost would be? Because I see you want to continue it through June 30th, so have we factored out what this would cost and the number of employees that would be involved?
So the pay here is, is the same pay that we would be paying substitutes that come in, so it's within your, your current substitute line. The $125 is the budgeted amount for substitute needs. We can't find substitutes right now, so this is an added measure to be able to meet, unfortunately, the fact that we typically have a 60% fill rate. And this year, again, like most districts, and certainly urban districts across the country, our fill rate is hovering around 30% right now. So this is not an additional cost. It's shifting the payment from a substitute we typically would have to now paying the employees that we have to cover double duty.
And can I ask just one final question?
Sure.
And I'm, I'm not sure if this is something you can address, but you talk about equity. So how do you see this as being fair to other staff who are doing extra duties, you know, people who are not unaffiliated, and they're not getting paid this additional stipend over their salary? How is that equitable?
They are. So it's covered within their contracts, and that's been negotiated across every contract. So within our UTL contract, for instance, there's an additional paid rate for voluntary as well as obligated additional work. There's additional pay rate for additional class periods being taught. There's a compensation has already been considered within the contract process and has been negotiated by the committee historically and going forward. The fact you have here is these are individuals without contracts.
Right.
So none of this has been considered within the typical negotiating window. Our affiliated employees, particularly those within UTL, much of this has already been considered, contemplated, and if they teach additionally or work additionally, those pay rates are set based on the agreement.
Any other comment?
I was just thinking, Ms. Doherty, are you thinking about maybe paraprofessionals that don't get the extra money when they step up to be a teacher?
Ms. Doherty?
I was thinking more the LSAA. Those union representatives are covering a lot of duties in our classes as well.
We've drafted some work around bargaining that was the, on the executive session agenda, and I would like to leave it there.
If I, I could briefly, Dr. Boyd, I do have permission from LSAA to relay.
Okay, hot off the press here, Dr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, is, is an update okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
So LSAA is consenting. So LSAA has consented to me explaining what is going on. But Ms. Doherty, you're correct. So we've have a proposed agreement for the committee's consideration, where the LSAA members would also get the 125 retroactive to January 3rd, because they have stepped up and certainly helped over the last two weeks in assisting bridging this shortage. We did have a a request, I would say, for LSAA members at central office to go out to schools, and yes, there was a technical objection, and we've worked it out, and every LSAA member did it enthusiastically, I would say, and no one just said, I'm not going to do it. So we are thankful to LSAA for participating, and the MOA that we'd like you to consider very soon would would give 125 in recognition of the extra work they'll have to do to catch up with their regular duties.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Hot off the press.
Thank you. I believe I we had a first by Mr. Dakota. Do you have a second on this one? Ms. Doherty, second there. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Eight point five, consideration of providing an additional five days of sick leave to all personnel who test positive for COVID-19 or are required to quarantine as per DSA guidelines due to close contact status, retroactive to July 1st, 2021. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here is, again, going further down our line of ensuring fairness and support for all of our staff members. When we tell a staff member by virtue of the law and the prevailing guidelines that you cannot come to work, we believe it's a disservice to that employee to then penalize them by virtue of their available leave. This rectifies that in a manner that allows us to manage it at scale across the organization. So Dr. Hall has put some time into this in overseeing our human resource office to ensure that we can manage this across, that we're supporting our staff members, and that we're continuing, and the commitment to our staff members is that we'll continue to adjust this with recommendations to or policy adjustments to the committee as the guidelines continue to adjust. The intent, again, is not for any individual to be prohibited from coming into the workplace and then somehow unintentionally penalized by virtue of their available leave or what leave they may have to use. So Dr. Hall can give you the ins and outs in a concise way, but that's the that's the the short end of what is a rather complex policy position that he's worked to synthesize and summarize here for the committee. Dr. Hall, if you can?
Sure, and I would like to just point out that there is an addendum that I passed out that represents some union feedback and collaboration that I've got over the last several days, and it points out alternative amendments for the committee's consideration. And one issue is around holiday break, I believe, January 26. It came out that the recommended quarantine time could be just two, five days instead of 10. So that creates a issue where some personnel were required to stay out for 10 days, or I would say eight total days, which is where you get that eight from, because you could have a weekend involved for those two days. So the suggestion is for the committee to authorize, if it was before the change in DESI policy, you could potentially get up to eight days if that met your total quarantine time. Additionally, the PCR test, I think, is beneficial for everyone to have in case you have to have a chain of custody supported document to prove that you've had COVID-19, but it's certainly not required. I would say it's recommended, because we don't know how this will be treated in the future. However, these changes reflect that not everyone's had the opportunity to get a PCR test, and you certainly can't go back in time in most circumstances and get a PCR test. So as you see options, there's an option to strike the requirement for a PCR test for positives going forward. And that also, as we have all these home tests now, I would suggest that the home tests are now becoming more and more acceptable, whereas if you asked, you know, authorities four to six weeks ago, they'd say they wanted a PCR test. But now all governments are supporting home tests, and you know, HR is certainly not requiring you to get a PCR test to, you know, prove that you have COVID-19. However, there is a risk that if you don't have a PCR test, some auditing authorities could potentially not reimburse the school department, although I think that's unlikely. But that's why these options are presented to the committee. So the current state of the law is that the Commonwealth's supporting $850 in benef in pay and benefits, sick days to be reimbursed. Obviously, that's different from our building services employees to our directors or coordinators. You get a different number of reimbursement. This would treat everyone equally in regards to the number of days they get and allow us to go up to eight days total for any person, depending upon their quarantine situation and when the positive occurred. And this deals with the employee themselves. It doesn't deal with household members or any other circumstances in going up to the eight days, because we're looking at what the employee was required to do due to their status as a school employee. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I I don't have a problem with the intent of this. I think that you're right. If we're, someone's quarantined, they, you know, we should cover the sick days. My question is, how does this impact our sick leave buyback? And does it impact that? Because our employees get a pretty good amount of sick days as it is. I think a teacher works 185 days and has 15 sick days in a school year, and we still have sick leave buybacks. So is this going to impact that in any way?
It would theoretically, so you would, in effect, get eight extra days possibly, or sorry, six extra days possibly on average in most cases. So if you divided that by three, you would potentially get paid out two more days if you made it all the way to retirement. But of course, you need 15 years to qualify for sick leave buyback, so there's no real true formula, but you're right, Ms. Doherty. You potentially would benefit by two, two days in sick leave buyback. And I, we've had some brief discussions in regards to whether or not we could bank this money with ESSER money due because it's COVID impact, but Ms. Turner and myself haven't been able to research that yet in depth. But I would still say the two days of pay, given what's been encountered over the last year and the extra efforts our employees have made, is is worth it. I think if we weigh everything involved, but there is an impact, a financial impact, yes.
And Mr. Lay?
Thank you. Just curious, instead of just, if we can rephrase this, instead of having additional five days of sick leave, can we just come up with like an X number, like just substitute that hard five to the number of days being out because of COVID? Just because anticipating in the future, what if they say now only three days? No, so.
Dr. Boyd?
Yes, I think our intent would be to continue to adjust this as we as we go forward. We just have not adjusted it yet, and now we're at mid-year. This is the best information we've got available to us right now, and we do believe it's a disservice to our staff for them to be penalized, essentially, for a decision that is not their own, particularly as we're starting to see this pandemic carry for the amount of time it has carried. So there has been one adjustment, Mr. Lay, that is addressed here, whereas previously it was 10 days, now there's an adjustment around five days. If there's a an additional adjustment, we would expect to come back. And I have to say, the UTL has been a great partner in this, continuing to converse with them. We're on the same page, and we'll continue to negotiate. I don't anticipate any forthcoming challenge there, Mr. Lay, but we would we would additionally negotiate it through and work through with the union on that. The intent here is to, as it was described, to ensure that we're supporting our employees when they're faced with the circumstances of required quarantine.
Mr. Dakota?
I move to accept this as a going forward.
Second by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Could I?
Ms. Martin, oh, Ms. Maureen, I'm sorry, you have a comment?
No, yes, thank you very much. I I just want to follow on with some of the questions. So as I'm reading this, we're already selecting a subgroup of our teachers. So this additional five days of sick time is only going to be provided to personnel who have tested positive or are required, per the guidelines, to stay home. So this isn't a, across the board, five extra days gets put in everybody's bank to be used, however. It's in the, it's, so correct me if I'm wrong. So if going through our HR office, having to rep all this stuff, that's when it would kick in. It's not just an across the, you know, across the board increase for sick time. So I mean, the chances are, no one's getting paid two days or anything, because you'd only burn through these days if you needed them. Like, you only get them if you already need them.
Correct. I think I should have probably explained this, the process more. But right now, when when we're told in HR that someone has a positive test, I email them a application for the 850 days. So we have a bank of those applications where we could, you know, provide the extra days if this is approved. So you're right, it isn't just going to be granted out. We have a data set where we can apply. And if the committee is so inclined, I I believe the committee supports the amendments in the motion. Could you just stress that the one through three are part of the approval if the committee is so inclined, or leave out the ones that you don't support? Thanks.
Any other comment? Motion moved by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Rossi. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Eight point six, approval of American International College Research Proposal. Ginger Coleman, any comment? Okay, Ms. Maureen?
Thank you very much. Certainly make a motion to to approve this. I did have one question, Mr. Skinner. In terms of how she's going to be recruiting teachers, is, it looks like there's, I don't know, between 12 to 15 individuals, looking at different school sites. I'm assuming she won't be pulling any teachers from her own school, who are direct reports, that it will be others within the district? Okay, thank you. Thank you. I was going to say, that was that was very dramatic, as pauses go, but thank you.
No other comment, moved by Ms. Maureen, second by Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of privilege to congratulate. Ginger Coleman is one of our principals. She's the principal at the Lincoln School for making it to this stage within her own degree process. It's a seminal moment to make it to this stage. So if you're watching, Ginger, congratulations on making to this stage. We look forward to congratulating you on degree attainment. Thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Great comment. Nine, convention conference request, need a motion to bundle and approve items 9.1 and 9.2, together by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Dakota. Roll call, please.
I just have a quick question, actually, or a quick comment.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
On 9.2?
Okay.
Or it might be 9.1. Just to note that there are some discrepancies in the in the name of the tour company. So it's supposed to say EF, and it says ER several times in the document. So I don't know if that went somewhere else. And the other question is, when do I leave? That's all.
We'll make that note.
I didn't hear.
So could you, Peter, so Madam Secretary could hear, make a note?
Company, I didn't hear the addition. It was, it's list, it's supposed to be EF tours, and it says ER tours several times. There's one, one time in the in the last paragraph above the policy, the last bullet, and then one under the description itself. I'll note it in a minute. That's all.
Madam Secretary, did you get a first and a second on that already?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please. Oh, Ms. Doherty, you want to comment?
I also had a question, and I'm not sure if Ms. Thompson said it, and I just didn't hear it. On 9.2, so you've got this group going to Italy for four days. That can't be right, right? February 20 to February 24.
Dr. Boyd?
2023.
That's five days.
So is the question related to the fact that we're talking about next month with the way COVID is is currently occurring? Or is it their count challenge? What's the, what's the?
During the school vacation week, they're listing those days as February 20, 2023, to February 24, 2023.
That's five days.
That's all they're going to spend in Italy?
That's the request.
Wow. I thought that had to be a typo. Okay, it's really far to go. And I can tell you.
It is.
Five days isn't enough.
Again, for the committee, it is out in 2023. So if there's any adjustments to it, we'll bring it back to you, but this is the request.
Hopefully, no, no COVID by then.
Sorry, that was it.
Do you roll call yet?
No.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Eleven, professional personnel, 11.1. The members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate two sick leave days to Patricia Teague Daily School Paraprofessional. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Twelve, adjournment, motion to approve by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Doherty. All approve, say yea. No, nay, zero.